All right, good morning. Welcome to March seventh, twenty twenty-three. It is eight A M. I'll call the meeting to order. Are there any agenda additions? Anybody? Okay, are we looking for approval of minutes? Everybody have a chance to read through the minutes?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve those.
Minutes, any further discussion? Do I have a second?
Second.
For a second, any further discussion? Further discussions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oh, say no. Okay. We got the water board coming down at eight fifteen. Mike, oh. Were you probably gonna have a?
Not not real long.
Not a real long, you wanna you wanna hop in here?
I sure can, yep. Yep, I sure can, so just make it your meeting last month and any weeks I said. There you go. Our didn't make it your meeting last month, so I know you guys acted on a lot of stuff, so just wanted to make sure. I was up to date with where you guys are at and some of these things and just provide a status update on some of the projects that. We're working on for you, so the bridge replacement. Con Road five, west of state highway thirty-two west of that is bid next Tuesday at ten A M. So I'll be here for for that bid opening. If you recall, we already have the coverage purchased, so the box coverage for that. Are available to do this project, that project this next fall, so it's coming good, so that's on the fourteenth. For other bridges, we've got. The federally project for the bridge northeast of Finley and then the one in Bradlin Township southeast of Hope down there. Those are a combined project through the D O T. Today I've got, last week, we finally got environmental approval for the D O T. For that combined project, so now that we have that cat X that the D O T issues, we can use that to get the core permit. And get the plants sent in to the D O T on that, so. As as you recall from your last meeting when you approved the environmental documents on that, we're looking at. A double line of a hundred and fifty-four inch span concrete arch pipe. For the one southeast of Finley, or southeast of Hope, and then the one northeast of Finley is a concrete box culvert. Is what we're looking at for that project, so we anticipate being able to get those culverts and get those in this next summer, if we can get that bid yet this spring. And then the box called the northeast of Finley is probably a next spring issue, so this is. I didn't make all the attachments with it because the documented cat X that goes with it, that's part of what goes to the core of engineers, so this is just the. Three-page application form that goes with the rest of those, so as with the standard. Core permit on these federally projects, we'd look for you guys to sign on this twice. One is the signature to authorize us to coordinate with the quarter for this permit. And then the signature on the last page is just signing off on the application itself. So as you saw with that document, there is wetland mitigation that's included. With that, all the wetland mitigation will be on site for both projects as well as opposing to the core and the D O Ts approved. So hopefully at this point, we don't have to purchase any wetland credits from anyone else, but that's the biggest thing. It's ready to try and give the part itself to them.
One of the ones underneath here.
Yep, one in front and then there's one in the bottom, the back. Those are the. Acting bridge projects. I anticipate. Seems like lock, but someone is. Yes. Seeing with that project and looking to see, I guess, if there's anything new on that, if you received anything from the city as far as the in-town portion. Or what your what your thoughts are in that.
We talked to. Didn't care anyone. And it's been. I think that one. You know, you're. So.
Yep. So the D O T latest bid letting was on Friday. And even though gas prices are starting to edge up a little bit again. Most of the Millon Overlay projects had three, four, five bidders on. And for the first time in quite a few D O T bid lettings. The engineer wasn't the little bidder on all of those projects, so it's starting to look like Millen Overlay projects are. Starting to look a bit more attractive, so I don't know if your intention is to still try and proceed with this this year. If we are. I'd like to try and bring you plans and an advertisement at your next meeting and try and be ready to take bids in April, if at all possible. I don't know if it's possible to work out the arrangement with the city, if you're doing that in-town portion and not doing that in-town portion, or at this point. And just pump the brakes a little bit and.
Well, I think it'd be difficult to get the city portion done within the next month.
It would be tough.
Do we have any cost estimates of what it would cost to do the city portion? So if we do, so if we do approach them, we can say, this is what we're looking at for your cost, for your share.
No, and at this point, it's, you know, I think that first part of that discussion is what are we gonna do?
Right.
Okay. This is before we can really get a good cost on it, what what are they wanting to do in conjunction with anything that you might do?
City council meeting.
They probably did last night.
Probably this week, too.
I think it was last night, probably.
Well, last night?
Yes.
Okay.
I mean, totally up to you guys, but I'm just looking to see if there's anything I can do or anything that you want me to do.
I think we're, I think we want to move ahead with it, but we we probably aren't ready for the next month.
I I know they want to do curb and gutter. And stuff like by Rich House here.
So what would it? Why don't you? Maybe figure out a price estimate, engineer.
Okay.
And then I'll relay to Tom.
Sure, yep, put some numbers just to see.
Then I think.
We can meet with them and kind of give them a rough idea.
Do you do you wanna have the discussion of the city of they're interested in maybe proceeding forward or if we can maybe get this rolling this year?
It might be tough, I mean, we need to talk to them.
And I mean, otherwise, I mean, I. I think the last time we kind of talked about it, we were looking at pushing it into twenty-four, just so we could get a good.
Why don't you get us some numbers so we can reach a little bit like Donald saying?
Andrew, is there anything else?
Where does eighteen end in town of four ways?
Well, it was really more definite. We plow up to there. And they kind of think it's our road, but.
What doesn't enter the tracks or their level?
It's one of those questions, it depends who you ask.
No.
If you look at it from a D O T perspective, they're gonna say it ends at the state highway. So. It sounds good. Well, I'll be around a little bit, I guess, if you guys have anything else that you need from me.
All right, thanks, Mike.
Thanks, Mike.
Oh, so.
Send Green Sir, should we go through stuff with Reed quick?
Yeah, Reed, you wanna?
He's probably got a busy day. You're going.
Huh?
He's probably got a busy day to get going.
Let's do it.
Richard, you know who determines the weight restrictions on this road through town up to up to the tracks? Is that something the county posts or the city has say on that? If the county has a say on it, then. We might be stuck doing.
This year's on the. The snow, we need to get pushed back. All them spots. Bruce is, he had a party down there, Tony Road nine this morning. That his wish list on being pushed back. And with other ways. Five, five and one are way and eighty up here by Blaven. It took eighty close to an hour. Longer route on each road yesterday just to get them open. It's why to get them open, so.
Did you run them twice yesterday? What's that? Did you run them twice yesterday?
We did Con Road five, I had Bruce. Cause I called Bruce and then Bruce, I said, are you in? He goes, yeah. And I said, can you come over here and run Con Road five for Eddie again, because it was blocked just about, and so he said, yeah. We're also having a problem with the. The beacon right now, we haven't had time, Bruce has got it. Take the radio out on his B two. The week. It's been off for like two weeks now, it shows a pin, it's salted town here, then it went from there back to. Back to Hope and so if it gets time, it's gonna take radio out, the power must not be on on it, so. If you guys are. I like using that app because then I see. Where my guys are, where if they need help, especially during a storm, where we can go help, you know, go help them if we need to, so. And. I I'm thinking. That we're gonna probably need. Minimum of thirty-five thousand. Minimum, your one sixteen hour for your pushers and two hundred for your dozer. Evan's two hundred for his dozer. And and stuff. I I'm. You know, don't take long to. A thousand dollars a day for each machine. Out there, so. Last year, we spent like twenty-nine thousand seven hundred dollars. On cleaning and stuff, so. I'm, you know, looking at it to look, they were, they raised their prices a little bit from last year. So if we can at least get that thirty-five thousand, you know, and I'll try to stay as close as I can to that. If I could.
Okay.
So.
That's a hundred and seventy-five hours, we should get quite a bit done.
Good. Um.
I was thinking thirty right away, but whatever.
Well, if I could have, if I could have one of your, one of your guys go to Blaven today if you can. And a couple down here on one because. And then.
Reed, Reed, we'll hear that later. You can, you can discuss that, let's get, let's get this, the money taken care of here of. So Reed's requesting that we use. Reed's requesting for thirty-five thousand for snow removal. And I think we kind of leave it up to, obviously, he's got a map of what's going on, we kind of leave that up to his discretion like we kind of did last year. Him to. Figure out contractors to to go and and get them spots cleared out.
This money comes from the general fund.
Well, possibility. By the end of the month. Right? We might, so it's to answer the question, it can't come from the currency fund unless you guys see better emergency, which is fine if you guys want to do that, that you gotta do that for for the movements. Dollars. It, this would all be inclusive of the snow bill, it's a bill twenty-one eighty-three in the state legislature right now. It, House appropriations, it went through crossover, House appropriations had a hearing on it yesterday. And their idea, I was talking to Vegas the other day, and he said their idea is to have the governor sign the bill. Whatever they look like by the end of the month.
Okay.
So. They're still passing through committee, passing through the floor pretty quick, and then it'll have to go through conference committee. Some of their members have some different ideas of how that bill could wind up looking. Ultimately, the idea is to continue with that rolling average, a hundred and fifty percent of that rolling average will go. And then sixty percent of those costs, so all of this will be inclusive of that included in that snow bill, so goes back to reimbursement.
Okay.
It could be a possibility.
So probably out of the general fund right away.
That's good that we might be able to recoup it later anyway, I guess. We'll make a motion to approve thirty-five thousand. For pushing back snow.
Get a motion for Perry. Do I have a second? Second from Brandon, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oh, say no. For Perry, Richard is staying from that vote. Okay, let's let's bring the water board in. Thanks, Reed.
We're gonna lose some of those relics in another big snow.
Well, just, it was, it's one lane, it's one lane.
Maybe this week.
Yes, if we get another. Good morning.
Morning, morning.
Morning, guys. Gals.
You guys ready for us?
We are.
Okay, well, you know, this is our first. First time of the year with our quarterly meeting and then certainly funding phases and here is certainly. Glad to work with all of you, we've had the pleasure of having Perry come up to our meeting. Last month and and hopefully that was positive for him and almost for us, trying to share most information that we. What we do and how we operate, things like that, just some certain things we've been working on, you know, of course, we're continuing to work with FEMA. Trying to get a lot of our project stakes from two thousand nineteen through twenty, twenty-one and twenty-two. You know, we've been having a few little snags here and there, trying to especially fix that two thousand nineteen project. With FEMA, a lack of funding.
When you work. Up in Newbury Township.
Yes, yeah, and with that, we've been working with Senator Holman's office, Senator Kramer's office and Senator. House member Armstrong's office. And they've been very receptive to try to get us information and get us answers coming out of Denver, so we're very happy with that. You know, we've been dealing. Dealing with the old river dam, there was a meeting last. Thursday. And, you know, we're really getting close to getting that situated in the southern part of Seale County. We're really close, we're just days, if not weeks, away from getting a permit issued. Once that permit is issued, we will be able to solicit bids to get that construction. Right on, Perry, do you have any comments regarding that meeting or questions? On how that went?
I thought the meeting went pretty smoothly, I don't know if everybody's on board with all the landowners, but.
Right, right, there is a few downstream landowners that are have a little bit of hesitation, we've reached on it, we've tried to. Answer all their questions as we are not adding water into the system. We're just changing how it's being discharged essentially, it's the same amount of water, it's just gonna be discharged a little. There is all it is, so, but, you know, we're certainly trying to address those verbal concerns of downstream landowners and and work with them as well. Later today, later this morning, we do have a polling meeting with our drain number six landowners, we got some. Extensive damages on that site where we are a little. Worried whether or not we're gonna be able to afford to fix those damages without reassessing the drain, so we just wanted to. Have those conversations with our landowners at that time, at this time, so just to let them know. Where they stand and what we want to do, we're moving forward. And I guess the only other thing I have on on my sheet is a drainage complaint with Nelson County. I guess that's, you know, the ball's kind of in your guys' court. We don't know which direction you guys want to go with it. We've been in contact with Nelson County. You know. If you want our opinion on it or not, or.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Definitely.
You know. Hopefully they've addressed. Your guys' concerns and I believe Reed, you stated that it's it's okay, I mean. For the most part for now.
It seems to be the water get, it could, it could. Getting rid of the water a lot faster than Andy was driving up there. Like where it crosses the highway and stuff. There's, there's probably some more clean in it could be done maybe, but. I mean, otherwise, seems like it's been working okay, and the water hasn't really damaged you guys' roads. Really in the brick line up there. Oh, not too bad, not too bad.
I think our biggest concern was just the way they went about it.
Yeah, so is there, is there is a joint? Board or a joint?
We do have a joint board with Nelson County, and that's the one where in the past we tried to work on creating a legal assessment drain up in that. That region and and of course, we had all our ducks in a row to have that happen, but it's just the local landowners were. In favor of supporting that financially. At that time, and I'm sure the product's more than doubled now, so I can't imagine the appetite is as much better at this time versus what it was. Four or five years ago, but, you know, I I guess if you if you pinned me down and said, Josh, do you you think we should move forward with the complaint or we should just withdraw it, my. My advice, personally, I can't speak for the whole board, would be just maybe just withdraw at this time. And, you know. You know, I think they. Don't always use the term learn their lesson, but yet they, I think they realize there should have been a little more communication on their end.
Well, absolutely, and with that joint board too, I think that. That should have been. Definitely something that that gets worked through air for sure.
So. Sure. So that that's my my personal opinion, right?
Well, you're spot on, they they learn their lesson. I mean, I think anyways, they need to communicate better.
So other than that, that's kind of some of the things we've been working on. Or as general housekeeping items, we we have been cleaning out some of the drains, getting snow cleaned out right now, hopefully. Preparing for the nice, easy, slow melt yet. As every day we get deeper into March, we know that and the sun hasn't melted yet, we know that that melt is gonna come faster and faster, but. We're just trying to clean out some of the drains to alleviate any localized flooding, so. Any questions from you guys at this time?
What are kind of the plans for the new green up there?
On drain eleven, that one with the big washout. I guess I'm glad you brought that up, we did last fall get get a kind of leveled off for the most part. Round balls and bubbles and then they they kind of slopped it all in, just so it wasn't a safety hazard, and then this. Yeah, well, yes.
That went south and.
Yes. Other than that, so, yeah, so all that, we did temporary draining, so there is no more new water coming in. That system, it's all going to the salt. And this summer, I'm sure is, once we work with FEMA and our contractors and engineers. As soon as we can, we're gonna try to get a new product put together at that time and present that information to you.
You guys know what, when you said, when the coverage is gonna be replaced in Con Road eleven? The place gonna replace where you guys.
Drain to. Drain to.
Yeah.
Yeah, it'll be the spring.
We'll have to do a digger for that.
If you're saying, like drainage, like drain.
Did you guys put in for that designing or or not?
That's part of it, I'm pretty sure.
We haven't yet, but I'm a certain, we are under the assumption. Contractor take care of that and hopefully, and hopefully he waits till after spring's work gets done and maybe it's. I don't know June when he does. You say any other questions for us?
Other questions? Well, thank you guys, appreciate appreciate it, appreciate the update and appreciate the information.
Sure, absolutely, and we'll keep you updated, especially on that number redound. One, two, or three, when.
That gets rolling.
In place, because that's gonna be an exciting time.
Absolutely.
So I mean, you guys can all come on and scoop and shovel.
Yeah, thank you.
Reed.
Okay.
So our role is done. Minimum payment policy for right-of-way acquisition.
Yeah, so we, you guys talked about this at your last meeting, we. You guys wound up approving new minimum payment policy for right-of-way. We, the old auditor wasn't able to sign it for she was done, so I have the new one with the new auditor name on it. I don't believe that it needs to be a whole new motion and stuff like that, I think it could just be a signature from the chair and auditor, but. Wanted to bring it to you guys just to make you aware of the. Basically what happened, so you're not confused and wondering what the hell is going on. That's all.
Okay.
So unless you need a motion and stuff, I would just say have. The chair and auditor sign.
I think while we have already. Broke it, so. All right, we want to have a little more discussion on this Nelson County. Complaints.
I I contacted Tri-C Paving on Con Road eight where we replaced that. Over last year and they're gonna. By next month, I'll have an estimate on what it'll cost. To put a patch over the top of that and get it. Right now she is a good dip, so. I'll have that for next month on a on a price for you.
So that's your Con Road eight Culver Crossing, your Con Road eight Culver Crossing?
Yes, yeah, yeah, north of Con Road twenty-three.
Okay.
Yep.
So you want to patch an overlay on that or just an overlay and get the dip out?
Yep, yep. Yep.
All right. Back to the Nelson. Back to the Nelson County Water Board complaint.
Um, one thing you guys should probably all be aware of is that there was another complaint filed against Nelson County by Greece. So there is another one.
Different area?
In play, yeah.
I know one.
Well, I, I don't know who it is, but it's, it's been active for a while.
Right?
Yeah.
Water, water does that.
Well, it all comes from not communicating.
Right.
Well, and that's usually where the water issues begin.
Yeah.
Um. So looking, looking more into it, having some more discussion with, with some of the landowners up there, I did call. You, the landowners up there had, had discussion with them. Um. Uh, just making sure that we're taking the right steps to, to look to see. You know, are we having issues, talking with Reed with their, their county structures? Um. And I think, uh, the consensus I did get out of it was, was that we do. Withdraw the complaint. Um. Part of me. Wants to see it through.
No, I got mixed feelings.
Honestly, I really do have mixed feelings, I really. I really would like to see, uh.
You know, will they do the next one?
Correct. Yes, yes, and then, and then are we going to? What prevents the problem from happening again? You know, and then we're right back here again.
So we, we withdraw it and then they do the same thing again, and then. Our tax people come to us and say, well. How can you didn't follow through the first time?
Yep.
Can we put it on hold rather than withdraw it?
I don't think so, I think.
The one or, one or the other, okay?
Yep.
Or wait for a ruling?
Or what?
Well, I think once they. From what I understand, once they figure out a ruling, then that's. That's kind of.
Yeah, cuz I, they're, they're. Wanted to know if we want to continue. So they would.
For them. I know the. Water resource board also doesn't wanna create. A lot of bad feelings in the future here. They have to work together again.
That's. That's a big part of, that's a big part of it.
That's a two-way street too, they have to worry about. Not creating bad feelings with us by doing things the way they want.
Yes.
You know, since they done that, I, I don't think there's been really a significant rains either up in that area. You know. No. It's probably gonna be fine, but. It just went about, went about the wrong way.
Yes. And I think, you know, uh. Having that, that, uh. Further discussion with that joint board that we do have with them, um. You know. They'd go through some of that with them to, with them that joint board to. To let us know what's going on, what they're doing, I mean, that's all we're basically asking. So.
It's not fair to us, do you think they would withdraw? Bro.
That's what, that's what, that's what I fight with, you know, I, I.
I, I mean, I, I have one minute, I'm gonna say, I say, okay, withdraw, and the next minute, I'm like.
Yep, that's how I sit with it. I, I would really like to see. Uh, you know. But the other, the other portion of me, it, it's a. There's a lot of things that it can untangle. If, if some of that does happen too, so.
We have to respect the boards, uh, water board's opinion too, of course, when.
One hundred percent, they, they have, they have to work.
They're the ones that deal with them on a daily basis, so to speak. Maybe a part of the agreement would need to be that. If our water board can talk to them and say, we will withdraw the complaint. But if this ever happens again. Next time we're going through all the.
And I.
At least they're, they're on, put on notice that way.
Right, and I, I would say that if it does happen again, that we gotta go up file a complaint that it's, it's going right, it's, we'll see it through one hundred percent. So.
Hey, this is Charlie, can you hear me?
Yep, we can hear you, Charlie.
Yeah, I've been listening, um. You know, my, my thought is that we. Allow this to go through and get a. A, uh, final decision from state and then use that as our segue into a conversation with Nelson. Um. On what we expect for communication in the future. Maybe the state will say, okay, they didn't do anything wrong, maybe that they'll reprimand them for not. Consulting with steel as they should have. Um, it may be that they. You know, this was more than just, I think we all know, this was more than just cleaning. And, you know, it was dug down, bigger culverts and so on. So, um, I get what people are saying as far as. You know, honoring the, uh, water board, uh, position. But, uh, I don't, I still don't feel like we've had a. Significant rain or flood event up there to really know. And, and appreciate the integrity of what they did and how it's going to manage high water flow. But that's just my thought.
Well, I think if they, we let them continue, then we almost have to let them continue the whole way. Cause then they're gonna have a ruling then, and then they'll probably do what they're gonna do anyways, if you're gonna. Keep going with it, they're not gonna stop and say, okay, this is what we found out.
Once they get a ruling, I think then that's gonna be. From what I understood. Chatting with that, I mean, once they get the ruling, that's what. It's gonna happen, if they tell you, you gotta fill that in, you gotta go fill that in, if you gotta replace the culvert, you gotta go replace the culverts. Um. Because another factor of it is, I mean, it's. With all the funding that's around too, you gotta, you know, you have to be compliant. So they're. To get cost share funding, I'm sure it's holding some of that up. My second concern is, is. This, you know, the can of worms gets opened. And that, that goes down that way, what are the repercussions or the fallout from that for not only us, but the? Water boards around the state. Somebody might have another opinion on that, but that's what kinda sits with me a little bit too. Um, with that, you know, possibly come more regulation, more, more things on that, on that realm of things also.
Well, certainly reinforces our complaint since Griggs County now has an action against them too.
Yep. That.
I'm curious if that's a current one or. That would probably affect my decision a little bit more too, if it was more current one. Then I would say.
Well, you know, I don't know the date. But it took place, I don't know, it should be public information, it's probably.
Maybe we should find out. And then. Be able to tell next month.
And like I said, I don't, I don't as. As far as the decision process comes, um. She told me April, but like I said, it could be, it could be. You know what I mean, it could be July, for all I know, I mean, this complaint from two thousand nineteen, so she said their office is really backed up. And it could come as soon as April, so. Um, then I could reach back out to her too and see where the process is actually at, I guess. Um. You know, if we keep moving, if we keep moving it on. Um. The decision could actually. Take place also, so.
I respect Charlie's opinion, maybe we should let this thing play out.
Yeah, I'm really undecided, I don't know.
While you guys wanna think about it, we can come back to it here in the. Rest of the meeting, we can. Let's do that, let's come, let's just put that down and we'll come back to that.
That's all I have.
All right, Reed. Well, thank you, sir.
Yes, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks, Reed. Tell you guys are doing a good job.
Yeah, they're, they're.
Tell you guys are doing a good job.
They're keeping everything open as fast as, as fast as it blows back in, so yes, they're doing a great job, Reed.
But I've only got halfway hearing since COVID. I got inner ear infection on this side, I'm, I'm on the steroid. Hope, they're hoping it'll be cleared up by Wednesday. Really stuck to here. So.
Good job.
Thank you.
Thanks.
I'm also gonna go meet with the water board now and watch that drain six two.
Yeah, all right, thanks, Reed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. You guys are to roll through some of this old business. Um, Agassi Valley. Appointment of Diane Jakes in three years.
I've done, right?
No, that one shouldn't sign it, we're just gonna send it off or.
Yep.
But it's good.
Charlie, are you still on?
I am.
Okay, we wanna go through the VSO position pay?
Okay, um. Yeah, I, I haven't, Myron and I haven't had a chance to cross paths, but so the salary goes to. Uh. Goes to, uh, Dennis and then, um. The administrative, the ten percent for the. For the, uh. The ten percent of the amount of the mileage and. And, uh, costs and things, that's the pay that was going to Myron. Previously, uh. When Dennis first came on, so I'm, I'm still not quite sure what. Uh. What Myron is, was, was referring to. So, but I will follow up again with him and we just haven't been able to cross the paths.
Okay. All right, Jana, do you wanna go with auditor transition?
Sure.
HR.
So Trail County came over one day last week, Glenn and Heather, daughter and her deputy. And I'm gonna go through closing the books and everything. Uh, they charged forty dollars an hour straight, be no mileage, no nothing, just forty dollars straight. An hour. So they were here one day last week and Heather was here yesterday, kind of just answering some questions I've built up over the couple days. Um, things are going well. I would like to, we have interviews set up for Tuesday two this afternoon and three Friday. So I discussed it with Brandon, I've sent Richard and Brandon both, and Charlie has the applications as well. So looking for someone to sit in on that.
So I guess is, is, uh. Last week and I was talking with Charlie also, we're just trying to get that moved forward. Um, get the interviews going, so we can get that. actions filled. So I guess we're bringing it to the board who wants to kinda. Sit on them interviews, I volunteered myself for. I mean, this afternoon, I can, um, if somebody wants to pick up Friday, or if we wanna keep the same crew doing it. Um, just who we want to have involved with that process, I guess. Um, tax director. Um, maybe you wanna have a, a different commissioner in on that. I was thinking, or what, whatever you guys want to do, I guess, it's kinda.
Probably should be the same people doing the interview for the same position.
Same position.
Yeah, that makes sense.
And there's two this afternoon and then there's. Three Friday, I think one of that, ten fifteen, eleven and one.
How many? I can do this afternoon.
Here was.
You wanna do the afternoon and then, and then. That's, you can do them, okay?
Yeah.
Then I'll. I'll do the.
What time is the interviews out this afternoon? Cause you got a meeting till one, two fifteen, I think, right?
Two fifteen, yes.
One fifteen to two fifteen?
Well, I did commit to that first though.
Two, three.
So give or take, like we can. If. Like I said, I can, I can be available for either, either ones, so it's up to you guys what you. Or you wanna take the ones today?
Barry, if you wanna take it this afternoon, that's fine, we can, you can cut out early from ours.
That's okay.
So there always have been those afternoon to make it long anyways. Yep. It's very cup. Hold on, go ahead, Charlie, go ahead.
Uh, so there's, we have one applicant exclusively for tax director. Another applicant is for both positions, I reached out to that applicant. Given her, uh. Education, training and background, whether she would be interested in either of both the positions and. She said she was. And. I wrote that, I believe on her application, um, for reference for you guys. And then there might be one other one that. Has the credentials to. Be tax director as well, so there's. Overlap in applicants relative to the two positions, I just wanted to throw that out there when you guys were considering who was going to do, uh. Uh, which interviews, etc.
Okay, so. Perry, if, if you wanna take on all the deputy auditor. Interviews. And then. Tax director, who else will be part of that one?
Couldn't qualify for both. That are all, oh, you wanna do that?
Well, we should split, we need to split it up a little bit, I mean, so. So.
Would we have two commissioners that can do both? Cause there, cause maybe if we can. Hire one person for both positions.
Right.
The only, the only that's gonna mess things up then is Wayne's position.
Yes.
Hey, hang on, I wasn't, hang on, hang on guys, I wasn't suggesting hiring one person for both positions. I was saying that the applicants. Are, are.
Oh, they would apply for either one.
Dual, yes.
That's true. During an interview on twice? Pretty much.
I don't think there's any need to interview them twice, I think you can just. Have a. Have a comprehensive overlapping interview.
How many positions are we gonna fill, I mean, just one or two, hiring two of them? Is a tax position gonna be an independent position, or is that gonna be part-time auditor as well, like? Like he used to do?
I think what we were un- underlooking at, and this is up for discussion too, is that, that, uh. That would be an independent position from my understanding.
Are we gonna be looking at one deputy auditor or two?
One. One deputy auditor. I guess, yeah, the tax director do by themselves, I don't know. They can fill that completely and can look on and think you go somewhere else for. It's, I guess, I don't know, depends how much you can fill up your time, it's just that's.
That's what I worry about, is that enough for a full-time position? To pay him a, you know, decent salary? For just tax director? For a county of this size?
Ben, did you like to say something?
If you allow me to.
Go ahead.
Um, yeah, from doing tax director. Before, it is a full-time.
Yeah, there's a lot, we were actually moving Amy to more hours, cuz she wasn't getting them all done, she was doing it after hours.
So there's a lot, when you're, not just tax director, but Amy was the only assessor for a long time. So when you're doing your assessing, that's where she was doing a lot of after hours, um, that's. That's a very, not, it's time consuming, you know, it's not difficult by any means, but it's time consuming, it's just you physically out. Measuring homes, looking through homes, talking with people, all that stuff, so it's, it's. Better sometimes if you can do it, you know, inclusive with your regular duties as tax director. Um, kinda how I saw it was that there's a split between tax director and assessor, but it all matches up to the same thing. Uh, so one feeds the other. It all comes back around, so my opinion, if, if you were asked is that this is a, the tax record is a full-time job, it should be considered a full-time.
So it wouldn't be tax director and assessor? As that would be part of the same job?
Yep.
Okay.
I think we're good.
And, and just for you guys' benefit, there was a. You know, there was a salary, a line item salary for. Tax director and there was a separate one, I'm not sure what budget it's in for assessing purposes, and that's what Ben was talking about, is that. There was ex, there was additional money for Amy to work. Outside of normal office hours doing assessing work, so there was an additional line item. For, for that work, so. To me kind of, uh, like, to me kind of, uh. You know, buttresses what Ben is saying.
I have one more suggestion or thought, um, what a lot of, what a lot of counties have done whenever it comes to their tax director. Uh, as you guys will know, hiring a tax director with any sort of experience is. Very slim, uh, there's not a lot of people out there that have the specific experience that you need as tax. Uh, so there are certifications that you have to meet, class two, class one, etc, um. Unfortunately, that takes time to meet it, so what a lot of counties have done, uh, and again, just a suggestion for you guys. Uh, they have hired on a tax director at a specific salary, and then as they meet those or receive those certifications, they get a little bit. So it's not offering a full salary right away, it's it's a.
Are you talking about his pay scale? I know.
I, yeah.
That makes sense.
Nice.
Have we reached out to Amy to help us with our meetings in April?
Charlie, do you have any? Have we reached out to Amy?
Yes.
Would she be interested in doing it after?
Amy has said that she, and there's some additional things in March that need to be done yet as well from that tax director standpoint. Um, and she has indicated that she's willing to act as a independent contractor slash consultant for Steel County. In both uh. Meeting the deadlines for March and. Assisting the new tax director uh. From a training standpoint, answering questions, so on and so forth. Um, and I've also talked with the trail uh. Tax Dr. She'd be willing to do it, um, right now we have. A commitment from Amy to do it. And at fifty dollars an hour. And she's talked about, he's talked about being able to. So this is kind of dovetails with with uh. Um. Hiring a new tax director is that she's talked about. Primarily being able to do it like after four or in the early evenings and then otherwise just kind of being available on a. As needed as called basis.
Was she say she would be available for all our township meetings that we got coming up?
We didn't talk to her about that, Richard. I didn't, when are those normally held, are they held after business hours normally?
No, usually during the day.
I didn't talk to her about that, I wasn't really.
I think during April, April twentieth or so, they start, or I mean, that week, maybe.
What I see is that if she's available to consult with the new tax director, the new tax director should be able to. Handle those if Amy's, you know, providing. The uh, the process to.
Well, I mean, if we have somebody, if we have somebody hired by them, yes.
Yep.
That's coming fast.
Yep. So we need to get moving on the interview process, so.
That's all, that's all I am worried about is that.
Yep.
Who's going to be at those meetings when?
We'll have to uh. You know.
Most of the applicants, most of the applicants said that they need a two week notice.
Okay. So I also think it's it's part of the process if if somebody does resign or leave for, that's. You know, if it's right in the middle of a busy season or that we have no choice, this is kind of what we gotta go through the process, so hopefully everybody's kind of understanding with that too and. If there are questions that we will try our best to get them answered. Um. So basically back to kind of a the hiring, the hiring process here. Um. Jana, from our standpoint, Jana and Perry will take care of the the. The deputy auditor interviews. And then I guess, you know, we'll also be looking at the couple that were picked out for tax, you know, just to go and ask a couple extra questions for that.
Well, Brandon's the tax, you got time though.
Well, I'm about to work it out with Jana, I just, I don't know who's, and then. Um, Brandon, you want to take on uh. The tax director with Jana, and like you said, for Jana, you might have to be. If you don't want to be a part of it, I mean, but you can be kind of the hinge pin. Of all of them, I guess, to help the commission out. Um, then whoever else, you know, I would say, you know, Wayne should be a part of, if we're looking at hiring. That position to help out the deputy auditor, to help out with Wayne, Wayne should be a part of that. Process also. Um, tax director side, you know, maybe Ben, since you've done tax directing before, you maybe want to join in on. At one of them interviews or Wayne wants to keep doing them, he can keep doing them too. So.
No, he's gonna read that question.
I'm fine with that. Um. If you guys are okay with that. Yeah.
Yep.
Okay.
That's true.
We arranged interviews for all applicants, or what what have we done?
Everyone, but I couldn't get a hold of one of them.
Okay.
I've called multiple times, but.
And Charlie, maybe you can be available via. Zoom or something if. That I don't want to. You know, if you're. If you can join into that, be probably a good thing too.
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't know if we can do it via Zoom, but I could be available by telephone.
Telephone, yep.
Another thing I have a question too about, um, getting a lot of people are waiting to have a. Salary for them, I mean, that's going to turn some people away and. I don't know, if you want to discuss that with. Right now, so when you have them come in today, you know. I know they're. It's, because that's going to turn away some people and even maybe. They know what the previous one was making, obviously they're not going to be making that, but.
Makes sense to discuss the salary at the interview, yes, I think that would be a good idea.
So do we want to go? You guys want to go back and look off the. The budgets. About for the previous. And then decide from there? Or would you guys just want to throw a number out of the air, or what would we like to do?
Well, we'll have to.
And then see where it's.
What was, uh, you have the budget?
I don't.
I included all those in the package.
They're they're, they're in that, Charlie's got it in that pack.
Included them in the packets I left for for uh. Jana and Brandon.
So I think we can.
You all hung on?
Yes, they got here.
And there's more uh.
What is that one?
Which should be three different ones.
One, missing one.
Or maybe I, maybe I gave that one away too prematurely.
I have assessor and and auditor.
Hold one for you.
Okay. Thank you. All right, the sheriff's office, that's what it was, yeah.
So there's a line item um for deputy auditor, I think in the auditor's budget, and then there's a line item in Wayne's budget for. The pay for. What the person would do in that office.
What what's a deputy auditor, I don't have that, what is the, what is the number?
Yeah, thirty.
Thirty two, seven, thirty two, eight, twenty four.
And that was for. Uh. Amy or Carly?
Carly.
Carly. That's the option seven for working in the sheriff's office.
Not sure I heard that, so there's the budget for, under the auditor, is it the salary under the auditor and then salary under Wayne? I think those are are combined is what Carly was being paid.
Yeah, I think that is combined, is what I have. Her current salary for twenty two was like thirty three, four thirty four. Yeah, that's the one I got.
That's the one you got.
Yeah. The total was. And Amy had like three titles, like de- deputy auditor, tax director, and title six. Now roughly. Fifty three.
Fifty three.
So thirty four and fifty three.
Thirty four and fifty three.
Are we, are are we sure that that's the total that Carly was getting, or was she also receiving? I want to say it's like. Eight eighty five hundred or so out of the sheriff's budget. As well. Or am I? I'm pretty sure I included those in the packet that I gave to Jana and Brandon.
Yep, they're here.
I don't know what's mine list here, it's. I got both of them in here.
This one, so thirty four thousand. Carly for sixty five hundred.
And these, and these are combined, because look at these, they're all combined, so I'm pretty sure that's what it is.
None of mine are showing that.
Yeah, it's twenty two. To last year, it isn't the current, or the new salary.
Yeah, sixty eight, sixty eight, eighty seven.
So maybe it's close to the forty then? Forty?
Yes.
Here's that, yeah.
Yep.
So.
Oh, I got twenty twenty three here.
Add that on top of that one.
Yeah, so it's roughly forty thousand.
Oh, I see, you look at the different roles, okay, I see what you mean, okay.
So it's forty and fifty three. So do we just tell them a range of thirty five to forty for the one and? Forty eight to fifty three on one? Yep, or forty five to fifty three, I mean, that's a range.
Well, and then keep in mind, what Ben mentioned is that. The increase for the uh, for the tax director could be implemented in. In uh, two stages, as the assessor one and two.
Yep. Yep.
Yeah, I like that idea that Ben suggested, yeah. As you get certified, your salary will jump for those certifications.
So we're going to set the range for the deputy auditor at thirty five to forty thousand.
A deputy auditor.
You guys all right with that?
Thirty five to forty?
And then the tax director forty five to fifty three.
Forty five to. Fifty three.
And.
Maybe the. So doing. Auditor should be thirty two before you know.
Yeah, 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 let's do that.
Auditor was going to be what?
Thirty two to forty.
Thirty two to forty, okay. And the tax director. Would be what?
Forty five to fifty three.
Forty five. Fifty three.
And then that packet, the packet that I left for Jana and and Brandon. Has in it, the uh. Assessor levels and the training that's necessary and so on, I provided that so that. Uh. So that could be discussed during the interview, should, I think it was at the back of that packet. And then is Ben still in there?
Yeah.
Yes, still here.
Is that a, is that a two year process, Ben?
Well, yes and no, um, when I first started, it was a two year process, but COVID changed a lot, and a lot of those classes can be done online, is is my understanding. Um, it still has to all go through the state tax department, whatever it is. Uh, so when you, century code still states that when you appoint a tax director, you appoint them for a two year term. Uh, that term, within that two year, two years, they have to become a class one assessor. So uh, it's a two year term regardless. In those two years, they have to get, become a class one, so they have to go through class two, then go to class one, uh, and then. If they don't receive class one in time, and within those two years, you guys have the ability to. Revoke that appointment if you so choose. According to central code, they cannot be reappointed for two more years, uh, central code ties it pretty, pretty well with uh. Making sure that the education gets done within a two year timeframe, and truthfully with the, if the classes are, if the classes are online now. Uh, there should be no excuse why that two years shouldn't be. It should be more than enough time.
So they can get done in a year, they could get done in a year?
Yep.
They could get it done. At their own pace, basically, right?
Right. Okay, so everybody. All right with that? Yeah.
Yeah.
Just gives them a range to. Work on and then uh. I agree with that, with the tax director, we can leave uh.
What's the tax director salary for other counties our size? From that, okay. How do we get from fourteen thousand then on the twenty three budget? For tax director assessor to forty five to fifty three?
So that was the successor.
Well, it says department head, that I assume that's assessor, tax director, department head was fourteen thousand, and then the assessor was six fifty. So we come to fourteen thousand.
Like that's a separate line item, isn't it?
Yeah, that's why, um, some background, some history on that, when uh, when tax director. When I took over tax director, it was an added duty job, so that salary went from thirty some thousand dollars down to the twelve or thirteen or whatever it got approved.
Yeah.
Me to handle that, um, and then when Amy took it on, it was still considered an added job. So now that you guys are considering moving it. To a full time job, that's where the difference comes in play, so yeah, so yes, you're going to be, the approved is for fourteen. Because it was an added job under her deputy auditor stuff.
Sure.
Um, but now again, with that change, it's going to be, it's going to look a little different.
Since that was a.
Budgets are going to be weird this year.
Yeah.
But I think we were also trying to break it out. So we knew exactly what each position was getting paid.
Right, I think, I think that's important, but is that going to affect our budget now, our budget for this amount? And now we're going to offer this amount, that's going to shoot our 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 budget completely on this one.
Yeah.
Where's additional funding?
It's it, with what we're going through. We're going to have to do some um. Budget uh juggling, so to speak, as to where and what fun people are. Are paid out of and then come budget time this year, that'll all get. Rectified and moving forward, the line items will be consistent with the budgets.
Okay, that makes sense, yeah. So we'll have to, we'll have to do some jockeying for this year then, yeah. Okay, that answers my questions.
Okay. You guys ready to move on from that, that's settled, got the interviews taken care of, Jana, that's your questions, okay? Wayne, you're here.
The city contractors had for contract policing have not been renewed for many years. Think that's something we should look at, I'm saying they need to go up, I'm just saying we need to look at that, probably redo those, and they tried to look at those. Um. Originally, the contract was made so that the cities. Would pay for half of a deputy for the third deputy, that's what was set up many years ago. A little short of that nowadays, and that's fine, but. I think we should start talking about that a little bit.
When was that last? When was the last contract?
Six, seven years ago.
I think.
It should go up a little bit. It should go up a little bit.
So. And I believe the city of Finley and John, I haven't seen this yet. I think the city of Finley is at sixteen hundred dollars a month. The city of Hope was at nine hundred dollars a month.
Yep.
The city of Sharon pays seventy five a month. Laverne is paying nothing at this time. And the park board gives us eighteen hundred dollars a year for Golden Lake. Not a month, but a year. So we can do your math on that. I believe we're quite a few thousand dollar short time. I meet you at our half core. When you put in all the benefits, vehicle and all the budget stuff in there. I think that should be something we just need to talk about. If it goes up, it doesn't, if it goes, I don't think it, you can't go.
What, what's your, what's your feeling on that, Wayne? You?
Well, I'm a little confused what you do with the lake. Because I know that used to have a budget and now it doesn't have a budget anymore and there's gotta be some mills for that. I believe that the lake one should go up. I think there should be more money and I know that money is tight in there. But I think that one should go up a lot. I was hoping to bring up the cities, maybe a hundred dollars, two hundred dollars a month. I, you know, that we should cap off sharing at a thousand. If they're still able to pay, he's a pretty small town, it's very, very small budget, so I understand that. Every dollar we get out of those couple of little towns, it's, it's only a plus, so. Of course, we don't spend as much time there to do it, so I'm hoping the lake. They take most of the time out.
The cities are already budgeted.
And the cities are budgeted this year, so we're talking next year. Yep, we're not talking this year, we're talking next year. By the time we get our conversation done, meet with them, they put in for a budget if they decide and, yeah, no, we're talking twenty twenty. But I thought we need to start that conversation now, so it gives us a few months to yap about it and see what we can do and.
So the park board's been, been doing eighteen hundred.
A year.
A year.
That comes out of theirs.
Okay.
Not much.
Not for how busy that.
Probably maybe covers maybe part of the winter that we're out there, not even part of the summer, so.
What would you like to raise?
But that's a whole different, still county money, so how do you, I, I don't know, I take Peter to pay Paul. I, I don't know what works for you guys, that's your business, not mine.
What do, what would you like to raise?
The lake or which one? I think the lake should be raised. I think a good five thousand be a good number, but not. But I don't know if the money's there to do that. Just to figure it out in your budget if it's there for what you get for the mail. So that's all, I was gonna throw it all through, we haven't touched that. Charlie, if you could go through those contracts, I haven't had any discussion with Charlie about that at all. So Charlie could look at those contracts and see what things, see if they need to be. And it could be something worded in there that states that it never ends. I have no idea, so.
I think we can dig into that a little bit.
Yeah, like I said, originally that contract was set many years ago, many years ago. And that's what it was supposed to pay for that third one, a quarter or a half of a, a third deputy would be covered by those entities, so.
Okay.
Something look at.
While you're is that all you have, Wayne? Are you?
That's all I have.
Okay, do you, while you're in here, do you wanna talk about the Walsh County Jail facility?
Sure, it's Charlie online.
Charlie, Charlie, you're still online, right?
I am.
Yep.
I, I, I am not the expert on that. I kinda let Charlie do it. I know that Steve, behind me is Steve Hunt, the Sheriff of Trail County, who's more involved than that than I am. I know that, and Steve speak up, I know that the right now they're in the planning and they want all the counties to, that are interested in bringing prisoners up there to give them some money to help them with the I guess, or what do they call it, what, what are the proceeds for?
So we just had some big discussions this morning in Trail about this and long and short, there was a little bit of a miscommunication, I guess. We were, I guess, looking at a pay as you go scenario, we paid for so many bad guarantee type scenario. They're actually looking more at a like a regional type facility, some counties or entities to come in and basically be a part of the regional type facilities, so. Right now, they've hired a group to come in and do a basically a survey.
A study, yeah.
To find out.
I read that.
For each entity, so they know exactly what they need to build and what it would take to do that. Our last commission meeting two weeks ago, we, we were going to, our commission board to give up to go ahead and do the study, but this morning we, we put a hold on that because we wanna take a little more time and look a little deeper into it before we invest those funds. My plan is to reach out, I believe they call it Southwest Community Correction Center, Levison Dickinson, there's five or seven counties that are involved in that. We wanna look at that a little deeper and see exactly what they're doing and how they break it out and how they how they funded, you know, which, which counties you're paying, what percentage of what they're doing and how much they actually needed, so. We're definitely not saying, no, at this point, we're just wanted to.
I believe the, and Charlie or Steve, I believe they wanted a study number and that was like almost twenty grand, I don't know.
I believe right now we're looking at about twenty six.
Or just, just real call.
Just for the study, yeah. This would be for, they want the same for Sycamore.
But.
Right, money has gone down.
You split that, you split that, right here, I'm looking at its total fee. And it says twenty one nine forty for a regional facility split between counties that participate is twenty one thousand nine hundred, so twenty two grand. And then as if there's four or five counties that want to be part of it, that number goes down, right?
So would we, would we be able to bring prisoners there if we didn't become involved with them?
It's hard to say at this point.
There's no guarantee there.
I, I did speak with the sheriff yesterday up there and he pointed me back towards to call the, the the group there doing this. And they're at, they're at wit's end there also. They, they've been hauling, transporting prisoners to Minot. I mean, it's like, like Wayne and I discussed, it's you know.
I'm sure we're hauling them all over too.
We're, we're, yeah, we, we've got very lucky in the past, but the last one we didn't both far and run for, so get up to full capacity pretty easy. Barnes County has been pretty good about taking males. They basically, they're having a tough time filling their positions for females, all females there. We've only been turned on, we've been turned on about three times. And I gave up after the fifth jail to try to figure out where to bring somebody, so we did it a different way and we've tried this before, some of you guys, none of you guys are on the commission then, but Richard was on it. So Barnes County was going to fill the regional one and we spent a lot of planning down there, it was me and Keith Jacobson, I believe, was when that was appointed back then from the county commissioner and and we went to many meetings and financing and we were lucky enough then to have money from the empowerment zone. And so that took care of Grex and Steel's share of it, for the most part, we brought that down. And then the funding, the big funding that they wanted from the federal government, USDA, who was funding some of these jails at the time and just got done funding rugby. And then something happened to that rugby facility and that money and they cut it all out of their budget, so. And when they did that, the project was pretty much over. There's no way we could afford to do that, but that was a regional, there must have been seven, eight counties, nine counties involved in that one. I don't know how many are involved in this one. I know us and, and Walsh, of course. And the Pembroke County I know is, and Cavalier County, I know that, I don't know if there's others or not. We're having problems, Steve's jail was, was fine for us for a long time.
That's not gonna be opening again, is it?
Probably not. And the reason for that, and Steve, please, one of the big things is that they've gotten very strict in their laws now. So, I mean, I, I started there a hundred years ago. And it was a jailer and a dispatcher took care of everything, or you know, the deputy come in, I would be your, but now the new law, I believe, states that they have to have a jailer and a dispatcher on all the time. But there's sometimes a true, two certified jailers.
And that's your biggest problem is getting people, right?
Oh, oh, yeah, and then what do you do if you're right? How, how do you, how do you, number one, find people right now? And number two is sometimes there goes days when they don't have anybody in there, so you have two people sitting around doing nothing. Sometimes those two people can be punctures, a lot of times Steve wants three people in his office, but it, it, it just, you can't afford to do that in these small, small counties, so. So that's where we sit now. I think it's gonna go more regional all the time and I I think we need to keep a communication line open to them. It's a little further to bring our prisoners, but.
We budget right now, I think thirty five thousand here, don't we?
That's correct, no. There's yours, there's yours, we've maxed it up.
Yep.
But there's been many years that we've.
Not many at all.
What does Valley City do right now?
Valley City has a new jail.
Oh, they have a new one?
They're in jail.
I don't know on the top of my head how many it holds.
Okay.
I don't know if you've checked, I mean, I've been through there. We, we've had prisoners there. We have brought some prisoners there.
What's the chance of, of continuing with Valley City with, with the contract?
Oh, I think they'll contract for us, but I also just got a contract from Jamestown. I glanced at it, it's going. Jamestown, we occasionally put people there and then wants to sign a new contract.
Okay.
Actually, we just bumped, we just bumped yours up this year, I believe, didn't we? Five grand, we just bumped it up five grand this year, didn't we?
I think it was in a thirty, I can't.
It was thirty and it went to thirty five.
I think it was twenty five, went to thirty.
Yeah, you're probably right.
It used to be thirty five because we went through it, three years in a row. We went through twenty, twenty five thousand and then so one bad case and somebody in jail for a year had eighty to a hundred dollars a day, it doesn't take very long, you know, go through that mon- money, so.
Well, this is totally, I'll just, I'll pipe in a little bit here is that I, I, I think we need to continue to explore this. I'm working closely with Sheriff Hunt on the, the process and with Wayne and it's just literally almost every time we have an arrestable offense, Wayne and, and Steve are on the phone calling different jails, trying to find a bed for them and, you know, and I'll be candid with you that we have people who probably should have been arrested and or should have gone to jail after sentencing that we're, we're I'm having to do a lot more negotiation, I'll say, with the defense attorney and so on and so forth and I, at, at some point, this has to be addressed for both, both counties. Because it's limiting some of the options available at sentencing for us. And, you know, then we also just share there's times where we get a bed for somebody and then two days later, they call and say we're done here, you need to move this person out. And then we have to readjust bail on the fly with a judge or, or, or I file something, it's, 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 I know it sounds like I'm complaining, but it's, it's almost a constant thing, no matter you know, no matter whether we get a bed right away or not, so we either don't get a bed or we get one and then I'd say seventy five percent of the time, they want the person moved and gone. And then the other problem we're having is that Ramsey County, their jail, which I used, which I believe used to be a ninety person facility because of the regulations and such that, that Wayne and Steve have talked about, they're down to, I believe a thirty person jail now. And then you, we have a, a lot of these regional jails in our area, Grand Forks and Far- or in Fargo and, or Cass, I should say, and Jamestown, they are housing multiple federal prisoners and those prisoners get priority. So we're just, we're really running into some difficulties here and I, I, I'd like to see us continue in open dialogue on, on this whole thing and it sounds, maybe that's like what Stephen is saying as well.
Is, is Walsh County gonna have, will they take female?
I know you might be questioning right now, some of you, some of you know, but you're thinking, well, why are they taking all these federal prisoners? So they can double them, they'll make, they can pay the budget off on the, on the federal prison and of course they make very little of anything on that program, so.
Yeah.
I can't complain, Cass County has been really, really good to us. So I, I usually can sneak in and there, you know, but, but colorations, but sometimes it's very difficult there, so. So, yeah, we're in the middle of, you know, we don't do in the old days, you know, we used to hear about and people probably serving a weekend in jail and doing all that stuff, you know, our, our old days, the miners used to sit, you know, if they're on their third or fourth one, they'd go to jail for a day or two or three just to and then we had a bunch of work release, that stuff does not happen. We have not had anybody for we have people that have warrants, I'm not lying, we have people with warrants right now in our county. And we, they will not take them because they're not felonies. So there's no place to bring them. We sit there and everybody questions why we're not doing anything. The, the jail, oh, they're not taking anybody unless they're violent crimes. And we, we bring very few not many of our DUIs go to the jail anymore. You have to be, I mean, we just try to find it and work it out and we have, and we've done that for a while. We have them sign a piece of paper waiver and somebody that's eighteen old and so, picks them up. It's just, we've been able to do that more than like trails because our judges, they said we were so far from the facility. It's a three hour round trip for us, no matter where we go. So it takes, now we have overtime and now we have all that, so. But, so, yeah, pain in the butt, yes.
Is that just, it's gonna be an issue then to go way up to, up to Grafton, is that where it is?
You know.
That's a long ways.
About that too, and it's only, it's only an extra probably fifteen minutes to twenty minutes if you, if you head straight north. Other than bad weather or something, which happens no matter what, we should be able to.
So, so on the, on the realms of a regional facility, would that be, could it be located further south? I guess I didn't ask Jerky that yesterday.
I guess that would be a question we have to bring up to their board.
Well, I mean, because I'm looking at like building a new jail, that has gotta be like insanely expensive. I mean, just.
Wasn't that back like ten million?
I mean, it's millions.
Yes, yes.
I'm talking a hundred, but we're talking millions.
Yeah.
And, you know, there's all these new systems back, I, you know, twenty years ago, you know, you can do the pot system and you can, I mean, there's so many different ways to do it, so. Yeah, it's, I don't know, what structure they, they probably have that priority themselves, I guess. I haven't attended any of their meetings or their much about it. If you talk to the sheriff, he maybe said something to you, but I guess.
Well, he just basically said what, what we're all talking about right here. He says their, their jail up there currently is is in disarray. It's, it's A trying to find employees, he believes he's got, you know, can tap into some employees that he's been getting, but also he goes, okay, so if Grand Forks can't take him, we're driving all the way out to Minot to drop, he goes, it's just that's where we're at too. He said, so if we're gonna do this, we might as well make sure we check everywhere else and if, okay, we can do something a little bit more, we can add a few more beds for other counties, all right, here, here you go, but like I said, for us to invest in something that A might possibly not happen, but you know, that's where the commission.
It's kind of, we're, we're so small, we don't have a lot of money, that's a problem. And for us to throw or give them our whole budget and then all of a sudden, well, we're full now, so we really can't take your, your people and then what do we do? Are we gonna take care of our people that we gotta throw in jail?
I mean, even guaranteeing a cell. We might already have somebody in that cell. I mean, it has happened, we've had, I remember one time Steve's had nobody in jail over there for a week. And we had seven people in jail, it's, it's seven people and they're all ours. So it doesn't happen a lot, but it happens, so. But we can figure out ways around it right now and we can continue ways to figure it out, but the, the public eye wonders why that person isn't in bail and that's why, because it won't make anybody.
Right.
Right.
Hard to find beds.
They're ordered by the judge. We have to explain that, right, to the clerk, or, or, to the judge and says where he means, yeah, somebody, I understand that.
Yeah. So I think we you know, we keep vetting that process with Trail County also, I think we'll, I think we can because obviously in that, in that, if we partner more together, the, the better it's gonna be for probably both counties regardless, and it's what we're well worth a look into. I think for sure, I mean.
You can, you can look at the insurance and you pay for what if and it's a twenty thousand dollar bill every year, that's, that's a lot, that's a big, that's a big insurance risk.
It is. It is, it is, but just like Richard said, it's kinda but I understand you're. Your frustrations with it also, and then frustrations from the.
Sit there on the phone for. An hour and a half and the guy's also with me. Guy needs to go to jail and you cannot find a jail to bring this person to, it's very frustrating and all you're gonna deal with it.
Yep.
Or or my thought process here as well, and I don't know if this will help or not, but. No matter what we do, um, this part that they're doing right now, that we. We will, we're may end up paying for on this study. Um, no matter what, this information will be valuable, it's it's a matter of going back. At least a decade, if not further, you got to know information and they're not just looking for numbers of prisoners, but. Classification of prisoners, are they male, are they female, are they? Uh, maximum, are they minimum, are they, you know, did they have special needs, that kind of stuff? All that information will be helpful as far as determining what direction, also whether, whether you end up in Walsh or or not. Um, I think it is useful.
Do that.
I think.
I'm I'm guessing a lot more communication will be done in the next, uh, month or two with Charlie. I'll stuck into, um. Talking to those guys up there, so I'll see where we see.
Okay. I think we should follow Trail County's lead and just kind of. Put it on hold for now, what they did, I think that would be.
I agree.
Because we work with them so close and and if they're willing, if they're doing that, I think we should follow suit.
So there's what we said with that.
All right, appreciate that.
Not really, it's really starting. This ground with you, they've they've got a nice facility up there now, so hopefully. And start to find workers and get the tech people in March as well. Now we're not.
Yep.
All right, well, thank you, Wayne.
Yeah.
Thank you, gentlemen.
All right, let's move on to nine one one, Ben.
Great, so. The real reason I asked Steve to be here, um, we, as you guys. Are aware, maybe not aware, uh, Steel County contracts with Trail County for all of our, uh, dispatching for. Uh, ambulance, fire, law, all that fun stuff, uh, they take all of our nine one calls, et cetera. Um, so we started, uh, doing some checking and doing some looking. Uh, we have never had a good approved contract with Trail County before. Um, we have, it's been a handshake agreement to, nothing wrong with that, it's just we wanted to kind of formalize it a little bit. Now especially that we have the new siren equipment, the state interoperability radio network, uh, that's housed there, that was very expensive. Um, and we are working to find abilities for that, so we haven't paid that out of Steel County's portion yet, but we will be doing that pretty soon. Uh, this year for sure. So, uh, looking into all of that, Steve and I had some more discussions and we thought, okay, we should probably look at. Uh, doing some, uh, doing an actual contract. So, um, what you guys have in front of you is the, um, there's the contract that we looked up or that we talked about. Um, full disclosure, I did present this or we presented this to the Trail County Commission two weeks ago, um. Knowing that you guys, that we would have a conversation with you guys, uh, this month. Um, they did approve it on their end, um, the the super basics of it is that nothing changes. With, uh, with what we have right now, uh, we are going to increase our fees of what we paid towards to Trail County. So right now we pay Trail County a thousand dollars a month, comes out of the nine one budget, we're gonna increase that to fifteen hundred, um, starting in April. Um, I did a budget behind it all, nothing's gonna be crazy amount out of there either, we're still more than well in the black. When it comes to that, even with the siren funds, we're still in the black. Um, because you guys appropriated a lot of the siren funds out of the ARPA dollars. So, we we have about a, uh, forty, thirty-five to forty thousand dollar, uh. In the black, uh, amount, we're we're good. When it comes to that, so we're not, we're not hurting anything when it comes to the. Um. For the dollar amount, the other stuff that's in there, um, it basically just says that any capital projects that we have to do, so. So the radio, uh, infrastructure, um, that would be covered at a seventy-five, twenty-five split. Between Trail County and Steel County, Steel County paying that twenty-five percent. Uh, the caveat in there is that nothing, any of those capital expenses. Would not go in until it is approved by both county commissions.
Okay.
Um, so you guys would have obviously full authority to approve or deny any of that stuff and we'd have those discussions from there. As well as Trail County, um, the other stuff in here, and Charlie did look at this contract before Trail County, he agreed it was a good contract. Um, after he looked at it, the only things that changed were that I started everything on January first. And then I changed that to April first because we just finally got a chance to talk to you guys now. Um. That's pretty much it, it's gonna continue for twelve months, uh, unless it, there's a hundred and twenty-day written notice, uh, cancellation. So if we don't agree with it for some reason, you can always cancel that after a hundred and twenty days, um, we've been going with Trail County for the last. Twenty-five years.
Forever, yeah.
Uh, for nine one services ever since it kind of started, so, um, we're. My opinion, we're not looking to change that anytime soon, um. Yeah, so I would be looking for a motion to, uh, approve the contract with, uh, Trail County and then I would have. Uh, Steve and Brandon decided to improve it. Or Wayne and Brandon, sorry.
I'll make a motion to approve the contract as written.
Got a motion from John Don to approve the contract as written. Do I have a second?
So with that five hundred dollar increase, that'll take care of our budget, we still have enough money in that.
Yeah, we're still good.
Yeah.
No concerns.
I'll I'll second that.
Second from Richard, any further discussion? Favor. All in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose, say no. Most carried.
Sorry, I didn't know if you wanted to add anything to that, but.
I guess the only thing I would add to is, as Ben said, basically all you could in your. Full radio and nine one one side is brand new, so. As far as foreseeing future expenditure, I don't see anything.
And all those services or, uh, all those agreements and services are maintained through Trail County with Motorola. Um, so it's all, uh, we do, there is some hardware that's in there, obviously with the consoles and with the radios and stuff. Uh, but a lot of the software that we utilize is on a running, uh. Payment and running that annual charge when. So, um, basically we lease some of the equipment and they, uh. Um. It's kind of handles the the maintenance and stuff of that, so we do part of this five hundred dollars increase, we'll go to help pay that annually. I mean, there's mostly an annual maintenance, so. That's all I have as a little one.
All right, thanks, Ben.
Yep. Thanks, guys.
Got a motion from Perry to take a five-minute break. Second from Richard, all in favor, say say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say no. Most carried.
Can you bro, I have it. Are you guys back in the meeting? Can I have you sign this one? So those are just, um, you'll sign these every month. This one will be the state travel and then as well, well, she will be here. And you'll get copies of these in my month report that I send every month, so. Now they question me at the bank about this. Yeah, I've never been on it. Okay, yeah, because I had a question that when I was reading. Okay, yeah, I've always wondered, because I reconcile all of it and everything, but I can never sign, so I don't. Okay, I'll talk about that, okay, that's good.
Yeah, you ready to reconvene? Reconvene at nine forty-six. Um. Just to. Touch some things up here, um, tax director back with that, um. Is the commission, are we gonna look at hiring Amy back for consulting? Consulting with the new tax director or some. Of other issues we do come up with before we get a new tax director in at fifty dollars an hour?
I think we should, you know.
Okay, well. Got a motion? Yes.
Yeah, so, um. Richard brought up, uh. You know, questions about. Whether she would be available for the upcoming Tomship meetings and so on and so forth, I don't have an answer to that yet. Um. And some other things and, um, so we have two options and. One is that the, uh, trail. Uh, tax director has agreed to independently consult and assist. Uh, at fifty dollars an hour and Amy has done the same thing, but I I think. We need to have the option of either of them because I just don't know what. What they, wh- what time they're gonna have to assist in those meetings and so on and so forth, um. As Richard brought up, so if I could, if we could vote either one of them. And then I can vet that a little bit more and. And, uh. Figure out which one of them can best help us.
Okay. So. Brandon, do you wanna amend your motion to accept either? Kayla over at Trail County, her consulting and Amy. At at the discretion of of Charlie and I suppose discretion of when we need help from. It's after hours or during hours or. Yes.
I guess, I guess it's possible we may need both of them.
Yes, yes. I think it, I think it's good to keep the options open on on either side there.
Yeah, so. Do you mind, do you mind your emotion?
Let my emotion do, um.
It, I'll second that. Got a motion and a second from Richard, motion from Brandon, second from Richard, any further discussion? Okay, no further discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say no. Motion carried. All right, let's go back up to. Charlie, you have any further discussion on any of that?
No, I don't, thank you.
Okay. Let's go back up to the Nelson County Water Board complaint. Um. What would we like to do there, I guess? Would we like to, uh? Possibly do that?
I I think we should. If something was corrupted, without. your change might decision.
Yeah.
Yep, I'll make a phone call.
Can Tasha, can somebody call Tasha now and see if she can check it while we're still here?
Very well, good. That or I can, like I said, I I know a couple of water board members over there to make that. I don't know if they're still in their meeting up there, so.
Be nice to know where we're here.
Yes, it would be. Yep. Like to know that before I make a decision.
Yeah, you know, Aurora wasn't on the agenda here, but what are we doing with that position? I mean.
I guess what would be the discussion point is to figure out the helps that the help they were doing that if that if them department heads feel they still need assistance, then possibly we could could look at that, I think of of hiring that position to
We need to do someone carries position because she and we once talked to her about maybe giving her more hours.
Yep. Well, she's still under, I mean, that is something we need to make sure we bet and maybe you have already. I mean, is is was it under the pretense that she was only working per time or?
So Brandon.
Yes, sir.
I I sat down with Carrie after our last meeting, if you guys recall, we needed to wanted to figure out what the history was there.
Yep.
And I did do that. And got the background and some information from Carrie. So I think we can put that put that issue of auditor or excuse me, treasurer, clerk of court assistant on the calendar for next month and then I'll be able to and then Carrie can be there and Jenny can be there and we can you know, educate the new commission on how the treasurer's office got to be where it's at in terms of hours and pay. So I did look into that and talk with Carrie like I mentioned I would.
Okay.
One carrier wrote a letter a while ago too now, so I think we're dragging our feet a little bit probably again. Like with Amy, we drug our feet to there and it cost us. So we probably need to move forward during get something figured out for Carrie's office.
I think so too.
So what are we, what are we looking at then?
Well, the other option you guys is what Wayne had broached early this year is is you could set and it might be even with everything we have going on, it might be a good idea to have a second meeting this month.
Okay. I think that's
That'd be a good idea.
That'd be a good idea. Let's
And then have Carrie come in too.
Yep, let's 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 vet that, figure out a plan with that and move forward from there.
Yep.
Any certain day you guys? Any certain day for you guys?
Be much available. I keep all my Tuesdays open, so.
Should we try for like a fourteenth?
Fourteenth. Fourteenth will be here for
A bid.
The bid, so.
That probably be all right. Was the whole commission going to be here for that bit or just a couple of us?
Yeah, I think you just couple of us are going to be.
If we can do it next Tuesday, we should because we're
And we can maybe award that bid as well.
Yeah.
We're going to have interviews completed by then too.
What time is that bid opening again?
Was it ten? Ten AM? So do you want to
Do it at ten thirty?
Ten thirty. We'll have a special commission meeting at ten thirty on the fourteenth. Perry, without work for you. You guys want to, that's just ten thirty.
Do that.
March fourteenth, ten thirty.
On the fourteenth.
Once you, I'll let Mike know that we're going to have a meeting at ten thirty that day.
We'll call a special meeting for that. Okay, then we can work on some of this, get a plan together. See what we want to do there. So all we got left is the executive session at ten AM, five minutes. Don't even go through the bills yet. I did, I did, and I sent it to the rest of the commission.
We picked out our our work.
So we got payroll. That's payroll figured out and all that all works. We'll have a mutiny on our hands if we don't get
That's a bad dealer.
It is. That's that's one of the main main things. So make sure we have that up and up and going.
You get the Trail County ambulance straightened out that issue.
Yeah, they'll be, the check should be here this
They're going to, they're going to refund us.
Yeah.
They are.
Why?
I will just pay that later when we get the money on. Because I know we've always paid for something. We've always done it that way.
So I don't know. She just thought it was weird that it was like that because it didn't have a red in that area. So
Have we ever thought about doing something like paying them quarterly or a monthly or whatever instead of this, you know, paying them whenever the taxes come in or whatever and then he gets ninety thousand by the, you know, by June, he's got the whole annual salary. Would it be better if we paid him quarterly? Uh, that way we'll always have money in our account to pay it. Or even on a monthly, maybe quarterly is makes more sense than monthly, but I think we should change that so it's so we can
Well, I was always paid before and still want some.
Yeah. But I think we should go to a at least a minimum of a quarterly.
Yeah, and I know too, like they just bill they bill it up and then they do what
I mean, if we don't have the money in the account, it's better to be better to go quarterly.
Yes, yeah. Instead of a month, they might be a hassle to have to write a check every month. So maybe quarterly would be more realistic.
We'd have to do that next contract.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that needs to be looked into.
Yeah. So you guys know we we do have a contract with them. I'm not sure of the exact terms and what they say relative to when the payment is due or needs to be paid. So we'll pull that down and you can find that hopefully then we'll look at that and we can put that on the agenda for the special meeting too. So we know where we're at.
That was nice. I'm going to send the money back. They're really technically brought their house. So I mean, at least he's working with us.
Yeah, yeah. That's the main thing. And those CIs are all taken care of and
When is he, when was he going to meet with us again? Was that in June?
I'm not sure if it's a date set.
Thought we had another date. Yeah, because I mean, we don't need to meet right now, but just down the road, just we wanted to know how prior process was going.
He said something about
Another ambulance.
Get an ambulance for Finley there. Yeah.
I don't foresee that happening.
He said we were going to.
I I mean, if there's an ambulance sitting here, there's nobody running it, what good is it doing?
Well, it's not a full blown ambulance. Is that it's just kind of
Well, right now, we have that.
Right.
It sounds like that's working already. I read, where was it? Oh, somebody in Hatton called the nine one one. They lived in Arizona and they called nine one one in Hatton. They said they've never seen that kind of quick response. I mean, because of the the Hatton fire department is really good with their you know, they're, yep.
Here is the the applicants. Everything resume is stuff over there. Put that stuff. Give me that one sheet that that budget sheet that's mine, that top one. I've tried to see if I can, I'm going to have to dig more information in on Yep, let's add that good special meeting. See if Greg's got, I gotta, I gotta make some phone calls.
Well, it's nine fifty nine. We better early coming in.
Hopefully.
Hey, you know, run out for
It's a one turn to executive session.
With control.
County, county building security plans. North Dakota century code forty four oh four seventeen dash one forty four oh four dash nineteen dash two. Do I need a motion? Do we need a motion to go in? Okay, so looking for a motion to enter into executive session. Yep, yep.
We need to make the motion needs to be to adjourn.
Yeah, we need to I'll make a motion to adjourn the regular commission meeting.
Got a motion from Richard to adjourn their the regular commission meeting.
Recession, isn't it?
Most into
A recess.
Recession the regular meeting and go into an executive session meeting and cite the statute because can't, you won't be able to vote if you vote to go into executive session if you've already recessed your regular meeting.
So I'll be looking for a motion to recess the commission meeting and enter into executive session, North Dakota century code forty four oh four seventeen dash one. Uh, North Dakota century code forty four oh four dash nineteen dot point two.
I'll make that motion.
Got a motion from Richard. You got a second for Perry? Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say no. Motion carried.
Yeah.
I would say no. Okay, so we need to turn your bikes back on too.
Yeah, I expect.
When you get back into your regular session. We don't have to be determined. You can already. Let's see.
Yeah, I would say no. Okay, so when you turn your bikes back on too.
Yeah, I expect.
When you get back into your regular session. We don't have to be determined. You can already. Let's see.
Need a motion to resume. Our regular commission meeting. Possible. You got a motion from Perry. In a second.
Hi.
Hold for now. In the executive session, there's no motions. Made.
No action.
And no action taken. Okay, is there anything I'm missing here? I think we went through covered agenda.
You have anything else for me here, my good?
You're good.
Thanks, Ben.
Thanks, Ben.
So I'll be looking for a motion to approve bills. Everyone get a chance to look through them.
Yep. I'll move, we approved the bills.
And a motion from Don to approve the bills. Got a second from Brandon. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say no. Motion carried. Be looking for a motion to adjourn. Motion from Brandon to adjourn.
Second.
A second from Richard. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say no.
Period.